I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
We will call Councilmembers Baker, here, Galloway, here, Gumbelton, here, Lennon, here.
Here as well. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item, please. Are there any changes or requests for changes to the agenda or a motion to approve as presented?
So moved. Support.
Councilwoman Baker, seconded by Councilwoman Gumbelton, to approve the agenda as is. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Baker, yes, Galloway, yes, Gumbelton, yes, Lennon, yes, Mayor Covey.
Yes, that passes unanimously. Next item, Madam Clerk.
We have presentation item A, resolution of appreciation for Councilmember Gumbelton.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who would like to read this from the table? Councilman, would you like to do that?
I would. Well, it's an honor to read this resolution for my good friend and very hard-working councilperson, Tamiko Gumbelton. There's a lot of stuff in here, but I just wanted to add a few comments. I first became aware of Tamiko when she was a room mother with my mom for her son Ryan at Roosevelt. And my mom, even before I was involved in politics, realized how engaged you were and how huge a help you were to her class. And as I've seen you get involved in politics and do all the stuff, not only for the city but regionally, you know, those words really, you know, came through, all those little stories of you helping out and being there and been a great asset to the Ferndale, City of Ferndale, and I'm sure will continue to be, Tamiko. So we're excited to see you go, but know that you're on to bigger and better things.
Thanks.
In that light, I would read this resolution. Tamiko Gumbelton was elected as a member of the 40th Ferndale City Council in November of 2005. She has worked tirelessly in her role as a council member by being on many city boards and committees, such as the Ferndale Community Foundation, the Art and Public Places Committee, the Police and Fireman Retirement System, and the Appointee Liaison Committees for the City Clerk and Fire Chief. Tamiko's commitment to the residents of Ferndale extends beyond her duties as a member of the city council through her generous donation of time and energy to Ferndale Youth Assistance and the Southeast Oakland Coalition. She is Chair of the Ferndale Democrats and works for Senator Debbie Stabenow in addition to owning an event photography business. Tamiko Gumbelton's work as a community advocate gained her a 2009 Good Neighbors Award from Citizens for a Fair Ferndale. Tamiko Gumbelton has always looked at all sides of an issue and thoroughly considered what was in the best interests of Ferndale's residents. She has worked hard to communicate the functions of government to our citizens and been a tireless advocate for the youth and disadvantaged in our community. As a member of council, Tamiko Gumbelton has been dedicated to promoting a cleaner environment and creating a safer community for our children. Tamiko has, through her efforts, contributed to the growth and prosperity of the City of Ferndale, and her service has elevated the city as a quality community in which to live and work. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ferndale City Council, on behalf of Ferndale's residents, business, community, and city staff, commends Tamiko Gumbelton for her significant contributions to the City of Ferndale and wishes her well in her future endeavors.
If I can add, Councilwoman Gumbelton, on behalf of all the citizens of Ferndale, we appreciate your four solid years of service up at this table. We know you have a long history of good work, and I suspect that you're not finished. I suspect you're going to do lots of great work as well. Is there anyone else in the audience or up at the table?
Like I said in 1-5, when they entered, what I liked about you best is you made sure, when we were discussing issues up here, that they knew about it. A lot of times we'll talk about something up here and the residents don't have the full scope of what's going on. You made sure that happened, and I appreciate your commitment to the city for four years. Thank you.
Yes, anyone? If no one objects to going off track?
Hi. Looks like Scott and the mayor pretty much covered most of what I was going to say. Dina Cacciodori, and I live on Maplehurst, and I know Tamiko, she's a good friend and a committed citizen and mother, and I just want to thank her for her service. And I know this isn't the end. It's going to continue. And I'm deeply appreciative, and I know the citizens are too, and as all the council. I mean, the hard work you do, the mayor, really, you go unsung often, and it's tough work. And I know that Melanie Piana is going to carry on with the same enthusiasm. Thank you.
Thanks, Dina.
Thanks, Dina. Okay.
I'll get too upset. I'm not saying anything.
You'll get. Well, we also have, you know, call to council at the end of the meeting. Let's unanimously adopt this resolution. Unanimous support?
Support.
Thank you very much. Again, congratulations, Tamiko. Now I've lost track of my agenda. Here we are. Madam Clerk, next item.
We are at call to audience.
We are at call to audience. On the last council meeting of 2009, I think that's a good thing. It's a 30-minute period. Three minutes, we ask limit of your remarks and that you give us your name and address verbally or in the back, and of course, try to use all decorum without any attacks on the integrity of any specific individuals. Yes, sir?
Good evening, Council Mayor. Frank Flores, representing Ferndale American Legion, is post adjutant. I have a few words to bring on about. First of all, as you know, we sold our building this past summer, and we leased it out for you for about six months. We had our last meeting this past month, and we decided, our board and members, decided not to renew, of course. So in the last past three weeks, we've been trying to vacate our building. As you know, Councilman Lennon here mentioned that we had our last call party at our post December 5. What I brought into attention is a few items here I'd like to make note of, so I have a few words of interest. The Ferndale American Legion Post 330 was chartered on April 5, 1935, with its initial members of 16. The American Legion conducted its first meeting, which is known as the Higgins Chevrolet Building. If anybody knows where that is, that's right there, I believe on Camborn and Woodward. Most of the meetings were held there. The Ferndale American Legion Auxiliary was also established at the same year. The post-in units held meetings at various sites until the Ferndale American Legion Memorial Home Association, a nonprofit corporation formed it to provide a permanent home for its organization. Our first commander, Virgil Jones, in 1935 donated the land, which at that time, the organization achieved and dedicated what was called the Memorial Hall on December of 1947, on 1741 Livernoyes, which presently is located. Over the past 74 years in the same location, the post-in unit have successfully fulfilled their common commitment to honor and to expand the rights and privileges of all American veterans, as well as to work in behalf of the betterment of the community with its involvement on its annual Memorial Day Parade, Veterans Day, and Flag Day open house. Activities also at the post home, we have noted that we are the home of the only city's American Legion 1988 state championship. Also noted on this is that we were the last team of Ferndale to be recognized at Tiger Stadium in 1989 before it went down. To noteworthy is, in June of 1988, the building and the post was renamed for a 43-year legendary member and lifelong city resident, George W. Danik. It is also the honor to be the home of the city's two past mayors as members of the post, the late past Commander Bernard Lennon and lifelong member Albert Gerli. And presently, we have a member on your council, which is under the SAL, Sons of the American Legion Councilman Michael Lennon. Today, the building stands quiet and still. As it lowers its flag one last time and closes its door, a landmark comes to an end. And so forth, the current membership embodies the same pride, dedication, and patriotism, which have long been the hallmark of the American Legion, continues on. All I can say is that we are still going to be active in membership for years to come. Our charter, we are working on that. We're looking for a home, but with a financial situation where we do have the money, but with membership really dwindling down, and all we can do now is hope that we can keep our membership for another year before we disband. So you'll still see us involved with Memorial Day activities and everything. So again, city, we thank you for letting us give us the privilege to be there, to do what we can, and continue on. So if you still need any veterans' work, I'm still here. Good evening and happy holidays.
Mayor, through the chair. Frank, if you could forward that information to our city clerk's office, if you don't mind, Madam Clerk, we can put that in a form of resolution? I think we talked about that earlier?
Right, right.
Okay, and I'll help Madam Clerk any way I can.
I will do that. Thank you.
We'll have that on the next agenda, Mr. Flores.
Thanks, Frank.
Good evening. Sherry Wells, 315 West Troy, just around the corner from Rosie's. I learned recently that the DDA and I have had several conversations over the years about these three or four summer festivals that are pretty loud all day long for all those weekends. And so I appreciate the fact that on their board, they have Amy Roll, who works at Spalding and Curtin, and I assume the reason for that is because it's a, to check on the noise. If Amy calls from Spalding Curtin Funeral Home and says it's waking the dead, then maybe they'll turn it down. I was sitting in a hospital reading a Discover magazine, and it had an article about noise. And in that, they gave an example of a firefighter who had been asking his neighbors to turn it down, whether it was fireworks, shooting up guns, or whatever they were doing. And at some point, he just couldn't stand it anymore. He cracked, and he's now in prison for shooting four of his neighbors. And the point of that, of course, is that noise, people can just get to the edge on the constant noise. Also in that article, I learned about these people and this book, and I'm wading through it with, I didn't get an engineering degree, but I'm trying to get what I can out of this. It's called Noise and Vibration Control, and it does talk some about airplanes flying overhead, but we're not near an airport, but we don't need to be. One of the things is that you can't measure noise at one spot, because noise doesn't go just in a straight line. It goes in all sorts of different directions. And it's been doing that from Rosie's. It's, Villanova, you all or the police department got them to quiet down. The boom-boom cars are still a problem. I remember six times in one hour, between 6:00 in the evening and 7:00, that I'm hearing these boom-boom cars go by, and it feels like I have a pounding headache for the 30 seconds they're stopped at that corner, for those who don't go straight through it. My neighbor, Mrs. Ryan, was saying, you know, I don't like cold weather, but I can't wait for it, because then Rosie's goes all the way indoors. Well, they aren't. They have these heavy-duty heaters, she said, and that's why we're still hearing it. They keep the door open, and so that noise is still coming out there. And in fact, where most noise is supposed to be down at 10 o'clock, they start at 10:15, from 10:15 to 2:15 in the morning, when they let the drunks out. It's pounding. There's about 10 minutes break every hour when the DJ takes his break, or her. But otherwise, my daughter has changed where we sleep. I'm now sleeping on the southwest corner of the house, and there's even times where, in order to read before I go to sleep, I'm using these. She figures that the DVDs she's watching, that those sounds are masking or warding off the sounds from Rosie's, but if she goes to bed at 1:00 in the morning, and she's a college student, she needs her sleep, she's still awake until 2:15 when the drunks come through. She has locked the screen door all the time, because she doesn't feel safe because of that. I understand that Mr. Ryan next door keeps trying to grow grass on his front lawn, and he said, and it's not just the dogs that are piddling there. We have other neighbors that you've heard from about parking problems. We have a Mexican restaurant we're looking forward to. I hope they at least keep their noise indoors, but it's just been a serious problem. I do not understand, where the ordinance says excessive noise, all it has to do is be loud enough to be heard by the customers. I see no reason why it has to be loud enough to be heard beyond that sidewalk, or certainly not beyond our sidewalks. It booms. Mrs. Ryan says there's things in her house that are vibrating. I've invited the police to come, stand on my front, top of my front steps, and measure it there. There's, recently, I called up about 11:30 at night. I said, I don't know whether I'm hearing or feeling the vibrations coming from Rosie's, but that's on the southwest corner of my house. One of the neighbors said, at least we don't hear 200 people, you know, shouting at each other over all that noise, because they're not out on the patio. So they feel like they're getting at least a bit of a break during this winter. But it's still far louder than it ever needs to be for whatever purposes that place wants to pretend they have. And I really appreciate, I really, they have different police answering the phone, I think, because they get tired of hearing the same ones, and I get tired. I don't complain every time. I get tired of complaining. I'd really rather not have to.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Ms. Wells.
Hello, Mayor Covey and City Council. Will Lewis of American Pop, 175 West Nine Mile Road. I'd like to give you the Nine Mile Merchants Report. The information is directly gleaned from the merchants itself. Just a basic summary of the results of city events. A little feedback for you for planning future events and maybe tweaking them a little bit. First would be the ice sculptures. This year, they were placed on top of garbage cans, so they quickly disintegrated, and then they were vandalized. The wood which held the sculptures was soon stolen or misplaced, and so those garbage cans were quickly used for their original purpose. I believe they were removed by Wednesday, maybe Thursday, at the latest. Last year, a merchant on Nine Mile had their sculpture stolen directly in front of their business during the event itself. The last of the candle-shaped sculptures made out of wire was stolen from Candlewick. And then I had the antler stolen off of my horse outside. And you might think that's kind of petty, you know, it wasn't something expensive, but that's not the point. Man, I had hot glued those things and wired them, and I used those cable ties, and I even ran a wire to the part where the kids hang on to. So it took somebody a good 20 minutes to get those off, and I found them mangled down the street later, about 1:30 a.m. So, you know, money is garnished from our taxes to pay for some of these events. And then you encourage us to go a little bit further and buy sculptures and do things like that. But there doesn't seem to be anything in place whatsoever to monitor these events or clean up. I know that since the sculpture were raised up higher, the ice fell further, causing some people to slip. Maybe chunks of it could be picked up and thrown. So there's no system in check to monitor these things or clean up. Second would be parking. During the high point of the holiday season, and the merchants on Nine Mile who do not own a restaurant, there seemed to be no lack of parking, even throughout the day, the high point of the holiday season. We all had plenty of open spaces for parking. That was not a problem. Last would be the late-night shopping till midnight Thursday thing. You were told that we were all participating. However, most of the merchants actually found out through a volunteer who does not own a business about this event, after the fact that it was published that we were all participating. I don't know how many stores there are between Woodward and Plantevent, 100, 150? Only four at 10:15 on Thursday night were open past 7:00, who normally are not open. Because there, again, there was no security whatsoever, and some of our merchants are women, working alone. There was no guarantee that anybody would be safe. It was kind of blindly advertised we'd be open till midnight. It wasn't a secure event. So only four businesses participated that I'm aware of. There was no security. And also, general consensus from the merchants on Nine Mile would be that we would have participated if we had known in advance of this event and that it had been maybe on a Friday or Saturday night. We promote our nightclubs. We promote going out and shopping and eating. Why not tie the events together? It didn't make any sense to encourage people to go out on a Thursday night, when everybody has to get up and work the next day and Friday. And also, the advertising was done on the same night of the event, which we thought was a waste of advertising money. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak during the call to audience?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. First of all, I'm Patrick Sheehan, Ferndale Firefighters Union President. This is Dennis Prior, Ferndale Firefighters Vice President. First things first, just want to thank Mrs. Gumbelton for stepping in the fire and doing what she could for the city. We appreciate it, and welcome aboard. We're going to only be here for a few brief minutes. Basically, we wanted to come and make comments on the recent survey that you guys had done, citizens' survey. And we were, just wanted to comment on the results. And we were very encouraged at the fire department to see how highly we ranked on the citizens' beliefs of importance and necessity, with both the fire and police. And we just wanted to let the citizens know that we think the same way. And I believe, I can't speak for the police department, but I believe the police officers, patrol, and command also feel that way. And all of us are, just have a calling to serve our communities. And just to the citizens, I wanted to let them know that your Ferndale firefighters strive to improve daily, monthly, and yearly. And we strive to be the best at protecting and saving the lives and the property of the City of Ferndale, Pleasant Ridge, and Royal Oak Township. And also to be included now is Madison Heights and Hazel Park. We also jump into their waters once in a while. We do this with great pride, and basically, if anybody, any citizen has any questions as to what we do, how we do it, and why we do it the way we do, we just want to let any citizen know that this is their fire department, and they can call, and they can ask any questions. And I do not want to make more work for our chief or our fire marshal, because they're busy enough. But also, if they are busy, I'm sure they will pass it on to the firefighters executive board, and we will be more than happy to answer any questions they have. And thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming tonight.
Hello, I'm Chris Johnston here with the DIY Street Fair. With beautiful weather in 2008, the DIY Street Fair, in its first year, was put on by a dedicated group of unpaid volunteers. It was a great success, but a financial loss of $19,500. In 2009, the weather was just as beautiful. The event was even better attended, and we still lost $22,748. I should note that, again, the bulk of the work was done by volunteers. So that's basically a loss of $20,000 a year, which, of course, begs the question, why bother? The people who put on this event believe in the events. We love the City of Ferndale. We think it's a great event for Ferndale. It's our intent that this kind of event, in the future, will bring about more local, independent, and corporate sponsors that will help pay for this kind of an event. But we have to build that event first. I was told today that as far as fees go, we were going to discuss four proposed fees. I should let you know that I was told about these four fees last Tuesday while I was on vacation with my family.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
I really hate to interrupt you, but I think you're going to want to talk about this issue, and it's coming up very shortly, but the rules are that you would speak to it when it comes up to the...
Oh, I thought it was call to audience.
No, I'm sorry about that.
Oh.
Call to audience is for any item that's not on the agenda. That is on the agenda, and we're going to thoroughly discuss it.
I apologize, especially to my family watching at home. I'll be right back.
Not at all. Not at all. And it will be here shortly. Thanks, Chris. Councilwoman?
She'll get the hang of it.
Piana? It takes a while. And we'll move, yes, sir. You are up next.
Yes, hello, Mayor Covey and City Council, Douglas Christie. And I am here today, kind of representing several areas in the city, but I guess we'll start with the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission. And we would like to just thank the council, and the mayor, and all of the people in the city who have been very active in bringing Ferndale to the forefront of the green movement, not only this past year, this past decade. And we are looking forward to all of the great things that the City of Ferndale will do to stay at the leading edge of the green community. And we're just here to help and looking forward to it. That's it? Thank you.
Mr. Christie, is that board full?
I believe that it is. We expanded it, but Mayor Covey would perhaps...
The Environmental Impact Commission? We can find out from the clerk if there's any open spaces.
Okay. I have somebody that's interested.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Have them apply, because there may be opening. Have him or her apply. You're very welcome. Was it a him?
No, it's a her. It's a her.
Good. Any other call to audience? All right, then, we are going to close the call to audience and move to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
Consent agenda item A, approval of the minutes of the special meeting, held December 7, and the regular meeting held December 14. Item B, adoption of a resolution opposing school funding cuts. Item C, approval of the reappointment of Michael Hennes to the DDA Board of Directors. Item D, approval of the special event permit as requested by Mr. Dean Bach for the Blue, I'm sorry, for the Blue Book Q, Red Burnout III, to be held in the Ferndale Public Library Parking Lot on Saturday, February 6. That would be 2010, from noon until 9:00 p.m. Item E, approval of the Second Amendment to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program Contract. Item F, approval of the employment contracts for code enforcement officers. And item H, approval of the bills and payrolls as certified by the city manager to be paid subject to review by the Council Finance Committee.
Well done, Madam Clerk. Any requests to have any of those items removed for further discussion? If not, a motion to adopt the consent agenda in its entirety?
Some will.
Motion made, Lennon, seconded Baker. Discussion, Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Gumbelton? Yes. Lennon?
Yes.
Baker? Yes. Galloway?
Yes.
And Mayor Covey.
Yes. The consent agenda is approved. Next item, Madam Clerk?
We have regular agenda item A, consideration of appointment of Jackie Smith to the DDA Board of Directors.
Yes, we do. Is there anyone who'd like to introduce this item? If not, I shall. Jackie Smith is interested in being on the DDA Board of Directors. She has filled out the proper forms. Looks good to me. Mrs. Shepherd Desius and Young Max. It'd be good to get Young Max on the cable. He can be his first television appearance. All right.
Yes, this appointment to the DDA Board of Directors for Jackie Smith. Jackie Smith is the owner of Candlewick Shop in downtown Ferndale. She is one of our newer businesses in downtown. I don't know where he's going.
He's good. We'll keep an eye on him.
Jackie has actually been very involved over this last year in helping to organize events, and most recently, with our parking committee. And we really feel that she brings that small entrepreneur's insight to our DDA board, as well as a great amount of enthusiasm and energy that we need. So we hope that you will unanimously appoint her.
Yes, very good. And she's obviously been here in front of us several times. Very, very nice lady. Any requests for further information or a motion? It's a mayoral appointment, but I need a motion in a second.
I move to appoint Jackie Smith of the Candlewick Shop to the Ferndale DDA Board of Directors with a term expiring December 2013.
Support. Thank you. Motion made and seconded, Baker, Galloway. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Baker? Yes. Galloway?
Yes.
Gumbelton? Yes. And Mayor Covey.
Yes, as well. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Christina. Madam Clerk, next item.
Regular agenda item B, consideration of special event application and policy revisions.
Thank you. This would be the item that we will discuss, having to do with the new proposed special event application and policy revisions. Mr. Brunner, will you introduce?
Actually, the clerk's office handled this, Your Honor, so I defer to the city clerk.
All righty. Mrs. Tullman?
I would be happy to, Your Honor. This actually started, our revisions to the special event process, a year ago this summer, when Christina of the DDA and I spoke about it. She submitted a lot of her recommendations and suggestions. And then when we got our deputy clerk, Marnie McGrath, on board, she took over. So for the last four months, Marnie has been meeting exhaustively with all of our department heads, including Michael Larry, who's our event director and has a lot of experience in the area of special events. She has met with Christina from the DDA. She's met with representatives from the DPW, including Sean Slocum, who does a lot of the parks work, and Douglas Christie, who is an organizer for the Green Cruise. Um, and Douglas Christie, who is an organizer for the Green Cruise, has also given some input. This has been before the Special Events Committee twice, um, and has resulted in this final proposal to you. I want to point out that there are three main purposes to this. The first we started out with was to provide a consistent application and approval process so that everyone was treated equally and that all the various factors that go into making these special events successful were addressed. If you've looked through the packet, you can see the checklist is multiple pages long. Um, everything from how many portage ons you're going to have, to who's doing the cleanup, to, um, whether or not you're going to recycle, where you're going to park, how you're going to direct people to parking there, how you're going to notify the businesses that are going to be affected when you're closing roads, all of that. A lot of times that stuff slips through the cracks because we haven't had a comprehensive process. So that was reason one we started this. Secondly, um, because the process has been so unwieldy, our department heads have been spending a lot of man-hours on this. So we're seeking to reduce the number of man-hours spent by our highest paid employees, um, by making the process a simple checklist. And thirdly, in view of our upcoming budget deficit, to start recouping some of the actual costs for city services. In the memo that I submitted to you, we have twenty-one points that outline the revisions that we are proposing. Of those, four, um, are new fees. The new fees being proposed, um, are a hundred dollars for use of trash compactors to compensate for the extra weight of the trash over and above what the city has charged for. That's something that has been given for free in the past. Um, we are proposing a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee for applicants requesting alcohol sales. Um, and that fee was vetted through the Fire Department, Police Department, and DPW Department. Those are the three departments who are, um, responsible to the state for the investigations for these temporary licenses, and they felt that two-hundred-and-fifty represented their real costs. Um, fees for the DPW installing, um, overhanging banners across Nine Mile and/or banners on light poles. Um, that's two hundred dollars for the over-street banner, hanging banner, and two-hundred-and-fifty for the light pole banner installations. And the third fee came to us from the DDA Board of Directors. They are proposing a five-hundred-dollar DDA use fee for any event occurring in the Central Business District. Other points, um, that we're hoping to revise in the process is reconfiguring the Special Events Committee. Currently, there's no representation from the Community Development Department, or the Recreation Department, or the DDA. So we are recommending that the CD, the Community Development Director be included. And depending on whether the event's going to be in a park or in the DDA, either the Recreation Director or the DDA Director. And as well, we'd like to add Michael Larry again for his expertise in special events. Um, we want to be more stringent about the sanitation requirements. That's one, um, complaint we get over and over about special events is the trash that's left behind. And Douglas Christie has been very helpful in helping us add a recycling component to the process. Uh, one of the most important, my office, requirements is a six-month deadline for these large events like DIY, Funky Farnell Art Fair, um, Motor City Pride. These are large events that take a lot of time, and six months is not an extraordinary amount of time for us to get it together and in place. One of the things that we think will help reduce, um, the strain on city resources in the form of staff members is having the applicants meet with our event director prior to meeting with the Special Event Committee to go over all the possible scenarios, to give them a comprehensive estimate of what their final costs to the city will be, so they can decide before they get very far into the process whether or not they can afford to do it. Um, and to then come to the Special Event Committee with basically all their ducks already in a row. Um, that includes the checklist that will cover every single thing that needs to be addressed and that sometimes slips through the cracks. Um, I am proposing that my office take over the, um, the mailing and tracking of invoices so that we know that everyone's being charged for the services that were used and that they're being paid. And we've added, or we're proposing that you add a component that if invoices are outstanding, we will not accept an application for the next year's event until those invoices are paid. Um, and one of the other major components is, um, the Special Event Committee felt very strongly about this, that we remove the options of free parking and city sponsorship of events, again, in view of our soon-to-be major budget deficit. So those are the main points that I want to stress tonight. Our deputy clerk is in the audience, as I said, she has worked extensively on this along with Michael Larry, um, Christina Sheppard Desius, and Douglas Christie. They've all had a big hand in this.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and we know there's a lot of good effort went into this. Here's how this process will work. Um, we'll start by, uh, asking council members if they want to request information, if they have questions they'd like to ask. Um, we will then, uh, allow audience members to ask questions or request information. Then if we have a motion on the table at that point that is seconded, then there could be discussion pro and con, or, or amendments, or, you know, requests to, uh, to make any changes. Is that okay with folks? If I could start, I did want to ask you one question, Sherilyn. Did you, did you mention the CDS Director as a member of the Special Event Committee?
She is not currently. We are proposing that she or one of her representatives be added.
So it could be one of her representatives?
Correct.
Okay, not necessarily.
And that will be language for all department heads, that it could be a representative as opposed to the police chief or the fire chief.
And that's because that department deals with?
Sign permits, tent permits, site plans.
Okay. And the same with the Recreation Director?
Um, if we're using parks, then her, uh, department is involved in the rentals and the opening and closing of bathrooms.
If you weren't using parks, then?
If we're using the downtown, it would be our DDA Director who would be sitting on the committee for those events.
So it could revolve?
It would revolve among the two of, between the two of them, depending on where the event was located.
I did want to ask a question of someone regarding tent fees. Is there?
That, that is a fee that has been in place as long as I have been here. That is a permit fee for all tents in excess of ten by ten.
Okay, so those are large tents, not just the smaller tents?
Vendor tents are typically ten by ten. They do not require a permit, but that fee has been in place.
I wanted to ask one question of Christina, if she's still in the audience, yes. Um, Christina, one of the new fees in this proposal is a automatic five-hundred-dollar fee to the DDA for events that are occurring downtown. Could you, could you tell us what that is for and why that is needed?
Uh, for maintenance as well as additional staff time on that. Um, the maintenance costs related with some of our large events, um, can take, uh, an additional, at least a minimum additional day to clean up from. And generally, uh, if you're looking at a full day of three-man hour, you're looking at about a six-hundred-and-sixty-dollar day that we're paying for cleanup from an event. There's also been occasions where we've had, um, damaged materials, landscape materials. Um, we try to time things as best as we can in terms of placement. Um, so it also would help to just replenish some of those, although it would definitely not cover all replacement in, in some instances.
When you say cleanup, who, who is that? You mean?
We contract out with Worry Free. That is our landscape service for maintenance and landscaping downtown.
Okay, so it's not litter, which DPW's, uh, streets?
No, it would be, it would be, I mean, it's litter that would go into landscape beds, into tree wells, places that basically the sweeper doesn't get into.
Okay.
Where there requires literal late man-hour to do that, um, on foot labor.
And the, and the fee is for any event occurring in the C, in the CBD? So, a small event would be charged the same amount as a giant event?
From my understanding, this would be for events that are over five-hundred, I believe. Is that how it's written?
No, it came to us as strictly a five-hundred-dollar fee for anything in the downtown.
Okay. Uh, I think that, that may have been under our impression of, of the board, but I'm not, I'm not real positive, um, what the impression of the board was. Our Board of Director is here, our Board Chairperson is, so she could address it as well.
Okay. But as far as you know, or at least maybe to, uh, to Sherilyn, at this point, the way this is written is that any, according to what I think it says, any event that occurs in the downtown Central Business District would be charged the five-hundred-dollar fee?
That was my understanding.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have for the moment. Um, Councilman, did you have a question or two?
I did. I was going to ask about Worry Free, but, uh, you asked and it was answered. They, they're under contract, so they would have to clean it up regardless.
They would have to clean it up regardless, but then that also means that there are things that are not being addressed that week because we're spending that time cleaning up from that event specifically. So especially during the beginning of the season, you have issues with, um, landscaping being planted at the same time. Um, and, um, so there's a large overhaul in terms of what we have to do in order to get that stuff in place, so.
Okay. And, and like, the mayor added, it's five-hundred dollars regardless of what size your event is. Do you have two tents, or you have forty, you're paying five-hundred dollars?
Well, if you're shutting down a road, you're probably not going to have two tents.
No, I understand that. Okay, thanks, Christina.
Christina, before you leave, I've got a question on that as well. Um, why should we not consider those things that you described, the additional cleanup, just to be part of what people are already paying for as part of the D, you know, being, you know, charged for within the DDA?
Well, I, I guess I would ask that then of other departments, too. Um, but I think that there are fees that, um, we have, we've never assessed fees for events before. I think as, um, the DDA has grown in terms of events and promotions, is that, you know, first, we really started off being the event generators. We were the ones always planning the events and spending a lot of time, um, in doing so. Um, as we learned better that we were trying to reach out to people to do the events for us, um, but what we still began to learn even further was that it still required a lot of time from us. Um, on large events, uh, like Pride Fest or other, or like the DIY, we can spend easily forty to sixty hours of office staff time on that event, whether it's from going to event meetings, event organizer meetings, um, helping to coordinate additional promotion, um, like the DDA website and other things that we're doing to help promote the area. And these are all, granted, these are all things that we have been doing. Um, and I think it's, it's looking at the balance of what is that now, um, in terms of what's been expected of us and what we need to be shifting towards. Um, and I think this is kind of that shift at this point. Uh, we have to look at our services in terms of what we've been giving to, um, many.
So, do I understand your comments correctly, that you really don't see yourself in the event business now or going forward, and this is something above what you consider your core?
I think less of. I think less of, because we want to encourage others to do it. Um, and I think that there are certain things that we can do as an organization, um, that we want to focus on, uh, and it might be more like retail-oriented events as opposed to shutting down the street events. Um, so I think that's kind of been our, where we've been going in terms of those type of events. Um, they might not be huge foot generators, um, but, you know, we get the tug and pull from businesses, those who like the events, um, who it helps their bottom line, and others who it completely decimates their bottom line, uh, where it shuts, shuts them down for a weekend. So, you know, we're trying to, also, I think, balance that as well.
How would, uh, how would Pride and the DIY be affected if the DDA just did absolutely zero?
Maybe they could answer that better, but I think that, um, you know, we have helped to guide the process a lot more. I think one of the things that, um, we continue to work on with them is trying to notify businesses of what the street closures are, uh, making sure that it's, um, adequately done. But we're still doing follow-up work on all that, even if they're not getting it done. I think some of the things that are being addressed in the special event ordinance that's being proposed will help that immensely. Um, but there's, um, a lot of time that we spend on our website, as well as phone calls that we field. Um, as the events get closer, um, we are fielding vendor calls all the time, uh, and pointing them in the right direction as to who to talk to because they want to vend at a certain event, as well as then, you know, leading the week or two up to the event, then we have many consumer calls asking about information, where to go for this, who's, who are the artists, who, those type of things.
What if, I mean, for a long time, the Farnell, um, Art Fair was put on, the only reason for the Farnell Arts and Cultural Committee essentially was to put on an art fair. Um, what if the DDA just got out of that business, took no part in that? What if we had, you know, three events in the summertime, um, DIY, Pride, and, uh, the cruise? Would there be any role, I mean, if we got rid of everything else, uh, every other event, um, that required, you know, DDA planning, that would be characterized as a special event, um, how would that change your budgetary demands?
Our budgetary demands?
Your, your requirements for staffing and cleanup and?
We would be able to direct our staffing into other projects that get sometimes, um, uh, slowed down because we're spending time on some of the other events. So we would be able to refocus some of our staff time and hours, obviously.
And those, I mean, from what you said, those other things beyond what I've described, non-event-driven things are what you see your core operations being now and in the future?
Well, I think our core operations has always been economic development. Now promotions is a part of that. And we feel very strongly about having events in the downtown area. Um, but we also, I think as a board, our board is trying to balance the fact that we have very limited staffing to do events and spend a significant amount of time on it. And that's why we have really tried to work with the volunteers to organize events and do those things. Um, I think that we still then deal with ultimately is, uh, maintenance and, uh, cleanup. Um, there's still some, uh, things that must be, um, conducted through the DDA because that's who the contract's with, is for cleanup, unless the city wants to take on that contract component.
Well, if you want to give us back some of our taxes, I suppose, you know, that might be considered. But, um, you know, I guess what I'm getting at, Christina, is if we got rid of this five-hundred dollars, uh, fee, but essentially got you out of the event business and got you focused on making the downtown look great, um, promoting businesses, doing those value, things that add value to downtown merchants?
We'll still have businesses knocking on our door and calling us and going, where's the information?
Well, I mean, can't you just direct them to, to Chris, to?
So then we spend yet another few minutes directing somebody to another person where we've been at least that resource where we can answer questions right away. I think that's one of our, that is one of our services in terms of customer service. We're trying to be out there with the information and provide it to, to the best of our ability. We struggle sometimes because we don't have all the information upfront. Um, but I, I think that some of the things that have been established in this, in what's proposed will help us to be more organized, for sure. Um, but I still think that we are going to be dealing with some very hard costs as well.
I mean, just to bring this full circle, then you really do see a core part of your activity as being event-driven.
It's, it's a balance.
Orals information?
We, it's a balance. We follow the Main Street approach, and that is a four-point approach to revitalization. It includes promotions. And we can't just wipe it away. That's not one of the things that we want to do or plan to do, but we need to begin to balance it out a little bit better. What we, what I'm saying is that we've been spending way too much time on some of the larger events as opposed to focusing on other things that we need. And maybe more smaller retail events that businesses have been asking for.
Let me ask one more, Christina, and that has to do with which events currently we think this five-hundred dollars would come under. Would it, would it include basically Pride Festival and DIY?
Pride, DIY, um, and then if there's any other larger-scale event that would come, come in down the road.
So far, there's nothing else, right? Dream Cruise is city-sponsored? We, we do the Dream Cruise, so we, we can't bill ourselves, or would you bill the city or?
Well, I think that's, I think our board would like to bill the city on that one, but, because it's a large event that really frustrates a lot of businesses. Um, but I think there's going to still be that balance.
Your Honor?
Just one last ques, so at this point, all things being the same, the, the new funds generated by this would be a thousand dollars?
Right. It's, it's not, it's not something that we're banking on in terms of, uh, money that we need. It's paying for services that are being rendered.
I hear you. Miss Ma'am?
Um, on the day of the DIY Fest, there's also the Funky Farnell Art Fest. Um, on the day of the DIY Fest, there's also the funky Ferndale Art Festival. Those are two separate events.
Oh, yeah, it's true.
We still have the Green Cruise downtown, and we have the Rib Burnout. Are we gonna charge Dean Bott $500 for having a tent on the library parking lot? It is in the DDA.
These are good questions, and that's why I asked which other ones would be included. And I was gonna bring up the Blues BBQ, but I didn't wanna take it off the, off the consent agenda because...
And I think most of the committee had, you know, respected the fact that his application came in well before we had finalized the event application. So knowing that he had to move forward on his application, not, you know, prolonging that any further.
Again, I don't wanna share opinions yet until there's a motion, but I, I think there are some questions as to whether this amount possibly should be staggered compared to different events. A Pride Festival that brings 30,000 people in a day versus, uh, a Green Cruise that goes by in an hour with maybe 2,000 people, and then a DIY that might be three days long but might be in the alleys, you know, they're all, these are different things, so...
And one of the things when our board was reviewing this is that, you know, we talked about maybe a $500 deposit that if, you know, if event organizers meet certain thresholds that they would get money back, but then it was really like, well, how do you really evaluate that? You know, did they get out to all the merchants with the, the appropriate information in a timely manner? Well, you could have one person complaining, but everyone else seemed to be happy with that. So is that a, is that a hundred percent mark, or, you know, how much do you deduct it? And I think that, um, one of the things in, uh, Veronica, our board chair, can address is that if there, if the council would like us to go back and review this further, you know, we just need more time to do that. We, we really didn't have time to bring this through our, our committees, like our promotion committee, who could then meet with event organizers to discuss all these things and, um, and then bring it back to our board with, with more information. Um, we did have to bring it through, um, quicker than what we would normally like to. Um, and we were in the middle of many other projects at that time, so...
Sherilyn, how long, how long has your office worked on this project?
Um, Marnie was brought on board mid-August, and she started about a week after that, so since the end of August.
Okay, since August, okay.
There is something I would like to say, um, because I hear there's a lot, there's a lot of questions here about what was decided, and what you have to understand is that when you ask us to do something, you also need to send a representative to talk to the board. So even though we have all our numbers in front of us, so we know what we're putting out, we don't know what you are expecting from us. We don't know any of, any of the other numbers that you're looking at. And that was some of the questions that the board, the DDA board, was wondering. What is everyone else charging? How much is this gonna be in the end? We have to bring it so that it's fair for everyone who's coming into the city to have an event. Now, I encourage anyone here from City Council to come to a DDA board meeting when you know that we're gonna be discussing something that is gonna affect the city. Okay? So, because we spend a lot of time, volunteer time, wasted time now, okay? You have to start taking responsibility just as much as everybody else. So if you want us to reconsider this, we can, but you have to have input. You need to come. Just like I would say to any other merchant on the street, if you wanna have input in what we do, then you have to come to the meetings, and there's no reason why you can't. You know when they are. They're always on the same day. So, I mean, if you want us to look at, look at it again, then you need to come so we can all talk about it. We need to look at the numbers so that we can discuss this with everything open.
Yes. The only problem with that is I, I know you're meeting there at noon, right?
No, they're 8:30 in the morning.
That doesn't work for probably four of us, at least five of us up here. And number two is, and I understand that we need the input, but I, as I say, for instance, if I go and I come back and say, I like these fees, the mayor, if somebody else, Scott, Kate, might not like them. So now, we're a voting board. We're not just, we just can't get on lines and say, okay.
Just like me, I can't change it here tonight just because you're asking me. It has to go towards, has to go to the board.
I understand, I understand. I'm just so we know where you, where we're coming from. We're a voting board. I can't go represent for other votes.
Right. Well, somebody at least needs to have input.
Thank you. And there's no criticism going on here. This is, this is the time when we seek information, gather more information. It comes to us from staff. You have staff. We have staff. We know how it is.
I understand. It's just kind of a waste, it's a waste, a lot of volunteer time. People are running their businesses, and they're trying to do the right thing, and if we don't have all the information, we can't.
Your Honor, may I just say that when Ms. Shepherd-Dichus went to the board with this, the special event committee had already met once. The entire packet was in place and was available with all these fees, with the exception of yours, in place. So I guess I'm a little lost as to what other numbers you were looking for, what other input you were looking for.
Well, I guess we gave you the numbers that we felt were fair, based on what we have to put out. If this was not where you wanted us to be, then if we needed to eat more of this cost, and you were telling us that here today, then it would've been helpful if you did that at a meeting, so we won't have to do this here. So we could say, okay, you want us to eat more cost? All right, we understand where you're coming from, we can do it as a board, and then just be done with it. Now we have to go back and do it again? It's, you know what I mean? It's a much more...
We're gonna be asked to do the same thing. That's what happens. You make a proposal. This is the voting board. They, they weigh our proposal against what is best for the residents. That's your role.
I understand. This is a political process, and you know what? Retail is a much quicker pace of things. You make a decision, and it's done, and it's just, it's a little more frustrating working in this, like, political, uh, climate and, um, pace. It's a little slower than what I think most people are used to in the retail world.
I understand.
So that's, that's where I'm at.
All right. Are there any requests for information, or is there any interest in a motion from the table?
I've got a, a question about how bills are handled.
Yes, ma'am.
Currently. Is it, if there are only, um, a few new fees, um, and I know that, um, Chris Johnston was wanting to, um, to speak in a little bit, uh, once we have a motion, but it, it seemed that it was a bit of a shock to some of the event organizers that these numbers were unfamiliar. So was it just a symptom of a sort of disorganized process that maybe, um, invoicing wasn't always consistent, or some, one person was charged for one thing that another person wasn't? I'm, I'm just trying to, if they're not all new fees, I'm wondering why it is a surprise?
Um, I don't really...
If you can shed any light, because I'll ask Chris, too. If you can shed any light on how the process has worked to date.
My office hasn't been involved in the billing process in the past. That's one reason we're proposing to take it over so that there is one central point of reference.
Mr. Bruner may have some, uh, light to shed.
Thanks, Your Honor. What happens is, um, that the departments involved in providing a service to a special event, uh, will, will send an itemized, uh, bill, basically, to finance department. Finance collects them, uh, generates an invoice, and, and forwards it to the special event organizer. Um, in the case of the art fair, for example, for the last two years, uh, the only costs that have been incurred there were from the Department of Public Works, so it's, it's just an invoice that reflects, um, costs from that department. Uh, on the other hand, for a, a largest outside special event like, um, Motor City Pride, uh, they may have, uh, charges from the police department, the Department of Public Works, and the fire department. So those are all, um, collected, and then the invoice is generated and forwarded to the, uh, the special event organizer along with those, um, uh, you know, additional attachments. Um, so as to, I mean, Chris can speak for himself regarding what of these fees were new or a surprise to him, but that's been the, the process in the past. There, there's a bit of a disconnect there because the finance department isn't involved in the special event committee, so some things can get lost in translation as they are collecting, uh, invoices from various departments and sending them to special event organizers. And I think that's why the clerk is proposing taking that over. I think that would be a good move.
Does that help, Councilwoman?
It does. And just one other question is, at what point do you determine, um, approximately how many hours of police time you'll need, for example? Um, is it based on a number of attendees, liquor license layout, or sort of all of the above?
All of the above.
Okay.
And that's one thing that we're gonna be looking at our event director, Michael Larry, to sit down with the organizers and start working on as one of the very first steps. Um, and then my office will coordinate if we need to ask the police what, you know, what they think. And again, police has presence, fire has presence, DPW has presence, everyone has presence on the special event committee. Um, so our hope and our intent is to let the organizer know at the beginning of the process, a pretty comprehensive estimate of all fees that they can expect.
And Michael would be helping us.
Michael would be helping us quite a bit with that.
Okay.
All right.
That's it for now.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So what is the pleasure of the board?
Well, uh, in my review of this package, I, I, there are certainly some good ideas put forth here, and perhaps, uh, the majority of the ideas put forth are, are good things to ease the administration of these bigger events that we're having now. Things that, the items that I like, uh, that I think make a lot of sense are items seven through 21, with the exception of 13 and 18. Um, 13 requires the city to review all promotional materials. I don't think that that's, uh, entirely realistic to have that type of, uh, review take place in a timely manner. Uh, 18, removing the option of free parking, city sponsorship. I think the city has to be, uh, careful whenever we, uh, get involved with a program like this, but, uh, for a festival like, you know, DIY or Pride or whatever, but I think to say that we're never gonna do it doesn't make sense either. I mean, uh, I think those two events in particular, to me, are, are pretty much landmark events, things that people know Ferndale for becoming, uh, you know, closely associated with Ferndale. I don't see any reason why we have to limit ourselves. We don't have to, you know, do the sponsorship of Pride if we don't want to, but, you know, last year made sense.
Councilman, let me, let me make this suggestion, 'cause I think most of us like a lot that's in here, but I think maybe several of us have a few items we'd like changed. What about a motion to table the item to a definite time in the near future? And then during the discussion of the motion to table, uh, those of us who wish to share a couple of thoughts on, on any of these items could do so. Would that suffice?
You know, I think that's a, a good way to go. My only concern is that, um, with the clerk's desire to have large events planned six months in advance, we're starting to butt up against some of our signature events, and, you know, I wasn't too happy and haven't been too happy in the past with different groups coming to us at the last minute for pretty significant planning situations. So, um, you know, I don't think there's any harm, well, and maybe staff could tell us if there's any harm in putting this off until the first meeting in January or the second meeting in January, but...
I certainly wouldn't put it off too much later because Pride is our first major event of the season, and we, and we are, it's...
Early June.
Early June.
Councilman Lennon?
Well, I just think, um, I agree with, uh, Councilman Galloway. If we were to forward you, um, regarding one through 21, any concern we have via the number, forward to you via email, for instance, I am concerned with number five, and you can weigh all five of our opinions and go from there. Would that help you?
Is that appropriate, Mr. Chris?
Uh, it, it would if comments were, uh, referred back to you and a, and then you and/or a committee, uh, brought back another proposal for council's consideration.
Okay.
Well, that would be the purpose of me forwarding you what items on the...
Wonderful. In terms of item five, were you being specific about that? Was that an example? Okay, okay.
Well, you know, it does, it does bring some attention to it, but, uh, I just threw that number out there.
Okay. But that is, you understand, a fee that's already in place?
Understand.
Okay.
Have we ever collected?
No, because we chose not to collect during last season, but to start with this season. Correct. Um, yeah, that's fine. That works, that works for me, if that works for you.
I mean, you know, I'm as anxious as anyone to get home, uh, this evening. It's nice to have a short meeting, but, I mean, if there's no, I mean, for the non-economic ones, if there's, I mean, do we want a six-month application fee? I mean, do we... What are we gonna counsel by table in two weeks? Are people in agreement with these things, or... I have a couple of issues, but should we work them out the table here, or...
I, I have a couple of questions, but they, they hinge on some of the comments I think we're going to get from the audience. So if there's a way that, I don't know if we make a motion to open discussion and then vote it up or down, or, or how we get some of the, the input from the event organizers in here. You guys are better at Robert Tschulze.
I did speak, I spoke with both the city manager and the city clerk about the option of tabling, and they both seem to be fine with tabling, uh, to the next meeting, which is in a couple of weeks. I'd be happy with that. We could share any thoughts, and it could be tweaked. We could also do it tonight at the table. I have, I have nothing to do tonight. I'll stay as long as you all want to.
So, well, we don't, I guess my only thought, Mayor, was that we don't have to do the whole thing tonight. There's some things I think that would be more contentious than others. Um, you know, setting up specified timelines for each phase of the process, I can't imagine anybody would be upset about that.
I have very little. I, I only have one or two things, so, well, I, I'm not allowed to make motions, so that's...
Well, here, I'll make a mo-, I'm gonna make a motion, and we can either vote it down or, um, whatever, but I would move that we, uh, adopt the, uh, proposed, uh, changes to the, uh, revi-, special event policy and application, uh, as presented in a memo by Sherilyn Tolman, our city clerk, uh, adopting items seven through 21, with the exception of 13 and 18. And I guess that's my motion.
I'll support that.
All right. The motion has been made and seconded, and that motion was by Galloway, seconded by Lennon. Could I ask you, Scott, what about items one through, is it, is it six? You started with seven?
Seven, it was the first one that was not on the calendar.
So you, you want to dispense with, with all of the proposed fees for now?
Well, just not deal with them tonight. I, maybe in a separate motion, we could table those to a different date.
We can do anything first, yep.
Well, and, you know, yeah, that's right. But I just wanted to talk about, and, and we can amend the motion, too, right?
Yes. No, this is good. We have a motion. The motion is to adopt the policy, uh, for revised special event policy and application, um, but just including seven through 21 with 13 and 18 removed. Is there discussion on that portion? From the table or the audience? Yes, sir. Mr. David Waite? Good to see you, sir.
Good evening. Dave Waite with Motor City Pride, Triangle Foundation. Um, going through this process last year was a real eye-opener and a learning experience for me, particularly with the application. Um, although I haven't seen it yet, I, I look forward to being able to see that. Um, gotta get working forward with that. Um, I think that'd be one of the nicest things in working with Michael. Uh, the last application was a very difficult process to go through. Um, this one does look like it's gonna be very time-consuming. I left my, um, proposal out in the car. I'm hoping that, um, you're also waiving the part on the six-month, um, part. I would like to get our application in January, was our plan, so we do need to have a little bit of flexibility. Um, I'm not sure if that's one of those items there, um, to, um, work with that part. Um, on the fees, it would really impact on us being close to $1,500, and I know that's not necessarily the portion there, but, um, please really take that under thorough review. After hearing the discussion with the DDA, I, I hear that there's, it sounds like there's a lot of issues in that area. I hope you do look at that thoroughly. Motor City Pride brings a lot of people. The merchants, for the vast majority, like having the, the new clientele in to see their businesses, and I, I, it seems we are to be charging $500 when we're bringing people in to see the businesses. Thank you for your time this evening. And if I could, as, as a last, even if this doesn't pass, if I could get the tentative application in the next few days so I could start looking, I'd also be willing to, if it doesn't pass, to give feedback on the application, um, for when it does go for vote.
Mr. Waite, bringing up a, a good question, Sherilyn, um, and that is that Pride Festival is June, what's the first Sunday of?
June 6th.
June 6th? June 6th.
Yes.
So six months before would be January 6th.
We'll work with Mr. Waite. If he's serious and sincere in his promise to get that in in January, we will work with that.
He is serious and sincere, I know that, but.
Wonderful.
No, I think the point is, Mr. Waite, that, you know, I don't think anybody's going to get, you know, rejected out of hand if they put a day late, a week late, but as you start going out two weeks, three weeks, five weeks, five months late, as has happened, that's not going to be a good situation.
It didn't go well because of the way the application was worded last year, and with it, we had two special events committee meetings, and my lack of understanding. I learned a lot this past year with that, and that the intent was.
Exactly. We understand that, and we want to make it work for you, for the city, for all.
We were actually going to start working with this earlier last month, but knew that it was under the process of being revised, so thought I'd just wait till January, and I just got an application today.
Thank you.
A tentative one, I'll say. Any other questions for me? Thank you.
What else from the table? Yes, sir. Mr. Christie.
Yes, hello, Mayor. Council Douglas Christie again. Couple of questions and/or points. The application packet, Sherilyn, that I had had the privilege of seeing, that is still considered a draft, or?
Until council approves everything.
So if there's some specific points in the recycling department, which is what I was working on, I would bring those up with you at a later date, this coming week?
I believe that the recycling component is part of Mr. Galloway's.
It is.
It's part of the motion to approve that recycling component.
Okay.
Were you saying you wanted to make some further changes to it?
There's some wording, or perhaps containers and/or bins or Sakura's name should be put in, or aluminum added to the plastic and the glass, things that were omitted perhaps, that I believe should be in that packet, our specifics there. Another question I have is, how does the application affect nonprofit organizations? I had noticed early on in the application draft that the word nonprofit was in there, and now it seems to be out, or maybe I missed it, and it says just for profits, in regards to the fees, for example?
Actually, currently, we're not distinguishing between profit and for-profit, nonprofit or charitable. They're all the same, being treated the same as a special event.
Okay. And.
Is that correct, Barney? I believe that's correct.
All right. And one of the upcoming events, which takes place in April, the Ferndale Green Week, which is kind of put on with the city, that would obviously not fall within six months, so is that?
Mr. Christie, that wouldn't even fall under this, because we don't have to close any streets or anything. So certain events, even the pub crawl, the Blues Festival, the Green Week, don't require city services, don't require police.
Even if there were about 500 participants, then, okay, I got you.
Unless you want to close a street, or get a liquor license.
No plans for that, yeah.
Am I correct, Sherilyn?
You know, if you'll contact our office, we'll talk about the specifics, but I know last year that Green Week did not fall into the category of special event, whereas the Green Cruise does.
Right, where the Green Cruise would, and it's nonprofit, but the same fees would apply as what's being proposed in the application.
We're not promoting fees tonight.
No fees tonight.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'd like you to just take into consideration that the DDA represents supposedly the best interests of the downtown shopping area, and again, they're here kind of sliding something through again. I, none of the, I'm not aware of any merchants other than who is directly on the board of the DD, who knows what even seven through 21 is. And you're talking about events, or planning events, or things that are going to affect our businesses, or even smaller things like me trying to raise money for the Ferndale Food Bank? I mean, don't you think that the actual merchants within the downtown shopping districts should know what seven through 21 is before you decide to vote on it, and how that's going to affect us, and whether it's going to shut down streets and then things like that?
This is all public information. This is part of the agenda that's been published. It's at the library, it's on the internet.
It's on the internet. So it's not the responsibility of the DDA to give this information to the merchants themselves, even though it affects the merchants?
I'm not sure that anything here affects the merchants. This is, this is going to change the way we process special event.
Mm-hmm. And I understand we're simplifying that, and it sounds like a great idea. It sounds like perhaps it should be done with a little more thought to the actual store owners on Nine Mile Road, maybe some direct involvement. And then this proposal is also coming to you from a group of our Ferndale government who's had years to work on these events, and they should be flawless by now. This is the same group who's done the Thursday night, the Thursday on the Nine Shopping Thing last year, which ran all through construction on Nine Mile, thousands of dollars spent on advertising while Nine Mile was nearly crippled with reconstruction. And now this same group is an authority, saying that they want $500, because they know what's best for planning an event. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Mr. Johnston?
Have you ever get nervous talking in front of people? Go up when you're not supposed to talk, and then get told not to talk, and then the second ten's really easy. That's okay.
I'm so sorry, Chris. We're all friends here.
I might be doing it again. So are we talking about 1 through 6 now? Can I give?
Do you want anything you want about?
I'll start with, I guess, I don't have my list, but it's probably 5. I'll save it in my big speech, but I think it's the odd that the DDA has proposed a fee, because I wanted to talk to business owners within the DDA about possibly reallocating some of the funds that are used for other events, if, you know, the businesses were in favor of one event over another, and maybe then those funds could be used towards city services and things. So in effect, it's a reallocation of the money. I think there would be a lot of downtown businesses that might be in favor of things like the art fair or the DIY street fair, over other things that aren't necessarily run quite as well all the time. I didn't really understand the stance on the DDA. I will say that the DDA, which I was a member of for years, spent a lot of time, I'll backtrack. The DDA is accredited by Main Street Oakland County, and I think they might get funding from them, I'm not sure, but there was a big annual awards banquet last fall, and the DDA spent a lot of time on a presentation to get the DIY street fair nominated for an award, which we won. It wasn't my doing, it was their doing. They wanted to use this to get the award. And I went, it was a nice event, but there was a big slideshow with lots of pictures and lots of words and lots of speeches that I didn't write, that someone else did for and about the DIY street fair, and I think that's kind of having your cake and eating it, too, to kind of take credit for our events and receive the award. I was happy to get the award, don't get me wrong, but it wasn't anything that I sought out. So perhaps some of the DDA special event funds could go towards things like the art fair, or other things that the city businesses would like, and as someone who pays taxes on three city buildings in the DDA district, you know, a lot of my money goes towards that, so I would like to see some of it come back, and as opposed to more of it going that way. As far as the fees go, I already gave you the losing proposition that the DIY street fair is, but I really don't think it will be for that long. I really feel like this is a great event, and local corporate and independent sponsors will come aboard and help make this event successful. And I also certainly understand what all this is for, and I know these dollars have to come from somewhere, and I certainly appreciate all the work that the city does, and DPW, and the fire department, and the police department, and they're very helpful with these events. As far as the fees go, the first one is a trash compactor fee. The DIY street fair, and my guess, the Green Cruise as well, generate very little trash. Our event takes place behind three buildings that we're currently paying for trash compactor service on. I don't really think that we put that much more in the compactor that weekend, and as a matter of fact, because of all the recycling that our businesses do, I think we put in less trash the other 363 days out of the year into those compactors that other businesses around there do. The second fee is for applicants requesting liquor sales. Because our event is determined a Class IV, which is the most hazardous event, we already are going to be charged theoretically another $400 in application fees, yet our application, I went through the application with Mark Loeb from the funky Ferndale Art Fair, and we went to the same number of meetings and asked and answered the same number of questions, and it really was pretty similar. You know, I'm not going to say there isn't more work to be done, but I don't know if it's that much more. And the fact that we serve alcohol didn't really take that much more time, and I won't argue that having Michigan brewed beer is a draw for the festival and makes it more popular, but I don't think we should be penalized for that. This is a joke here that I'm going to say, but it might not come off that way. Perhaps we should be offered a discount if we were to feature bad entertainment. Again, doesn't come off as a joke, but.
But you did.
Yeah, it did, thank you. We're just trying to do something that people like, and I think that that's what the beer sales has done for the DIY. The hazard level, it seems that, again, I understand the intent, but it also seems a bit misguided. We're the ones that are required to carry all the insurance for the event itself, and it's an extra expense to us already. The MLCC charges us $150 to process this application and do all the work that is entailed by them, and I bet, it's, I don't know if it's more than what the city has to go through, but they only charge us $150. The timing of all this is kind of interesting, after Arts Beats and Eats has announced that it will be moving to Royal Oak, based on the offer of $100,000 in cash from the DDA and $100,000 in city services, if I believe what I read in the paper. Royal Oak had to make some tough decisions. They had to say all events are not equal, and some events are worth keeping, and some events are worth going out and getting. And our goal with the DIY is to create a self-sufficient event, absolutely, but it takes some years before that can happen. I wouldn't ask for this consideration if it weren't really needed, and I would gladly sit down in the meeting with anyone necessary to show these numbers to, and show the numbers for what our event costs to put on, and I think that that would kind of speak for itself. On behalf of the volunteers of the DIY street fair, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Well done.
Thanks.
Work on the humor, but everything was really good.
Good evening. I'm Jackie Smith, and I'm the owner of the Candlewick Shop, and I'm now in trouble, because I'm now on the DDA board. One of the things that got me involved with the DDA and got me wanting to be on the board is the street fairs. On one hand, they're fantastic, they bring a lot of people into Ferndale, and on the other hand, they really do a disservice to the businesses who are on Nine Mile, seven days a week, 12 months out of the year. We are the ones who are struggling the day-to-day, making sure our businesses look great, are attractive, attract business to Ferndale. And then what happens, three to four times a year, is tents are set up in front of us, and we become an alley. We become unseen, because people travel between the tents for the fairs, and folks don't even know I'm there. I had people during, during the Pride Fest and during Dream Cruise who couldn't find me. Family members who were looking for my store that couldn't find me because we were hidden, and we came out to the street during that time. We were also told we could bring a tent out to the street in the sidewalk in front. Well, what happened is that there was no longer really passable sidewalk, so any merchandise we had directly in front of our business kept getting bumped into, or we, it was impeding traffic, absolutely. It was not safe, so we actually pulled merchandise back in. So what I'm asking is that, and I'm so grateful that DDA members will be on the committee for the street fairs and the fairs going on in Ferndale, is I'm asking for an understanding of how this affects the businesses on Nine Mile. Sometimes it's great, and sometimes it's terrible, but really what it is, is we become the alley. Trash is strewn in front of our stores throughout the entire time, and between the tents, which is the main aisleway, it doesn't get as trashed. I also understand that there's an issue with the fire codes. You can't have the tents in the middle of the street, because there is not enough space on either side for emergency vehicles to get through. If you plan a little bit better, maybe you could shift those tents to one of the sides of the street, and then emergency vehicles can get through. There's a lot of options here, and I would really like us to look at how this affects the businesses. I go business to business, too. I have, I have friends who, I now have friends who are business owners, and a lot of them say the same thing. And I would also like us to, and I didn't see it in here, is there's a quality that we need to have in Ferndale, and it's been missing in a few events, and I'd rather see them not happen than happen with poor quality. And I know that this is part of who Ferndale is, and I know, Michael, you do an amazing job with Dream Cruise, and I know some people bailed on you at the end, and they didn't do what they said they were going to do, but wow, that was, that was kind of a mess this past year. So what I'm saying is that, is that let's look at how this affects these businesses, who are a core and a draw into Ferndale. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any other comments?
Hi, I'm Melanie Piana, 600 Farmdale. I wanted to say that the DDA started on the special events ordinance review almost two years ago, because I was a volunteer on the Business Development Committee who was asked to review the special events ordinance and provide recommendations for change. And as a volunteer at that time, two years ago, I'm like, well, I really don't know what needs to be changed, and the DDA did something that they hadn't really done before, was they brought all the event organizers together with the fire department, DPW, and police for the first time. And that is where we learned the issues about trash, restrooms, and it really started fostering better understanding of what the needs were between the city and the event leaders. So I'm glad to see that this ordinance is actually in front of everybody today. I also wanted to say that one of the big things that we've always talked about on the Business Development Committee was the push-pull. Some businesses love the events, and some businesses are really hurt by it, and as Jackie has just said, the businesses who felt unseen, and goes back to the tent placement again, and how do we work with each event leader, as well as the fire department, on what is the best and safest for Nine Mile? So I just wanted to say, we have always considered the businesses' needs when coming up with these policies, and it seems like we still need to be working out the kinks. I also wanted to point out something very specific in the ordinance as well. We have a lot of requirements for the applicant to provide their payment in a certain amount of timeframe, but there's no real indication here of what timeframe the city has in returning the security deposit. And how are those requirements determined, and how much the applicant gets back in the security deposit, right? Is it the security deposit, or the, sorry? Yes, they had to put a deposit down for something, and then they get it back. Did I misread it?
Yeah, I think that you've misread it. Because they don't take a security deposit. We take the application fees upfront, and they're billed.
All right. I'll have to go back and look at that, that's my fault, so I just wanted.
But if we were to have a security deposit, I absolutely agree.
Yes, there is a security deposit in there, isn't it?
Damage deposit.
Damage deposit, sorry. Wrong word. Damage deposit. And so I would have the city consider to write something in there, who is responsible for issuing it, what's the timeframe, so that people get their money back in a timely way. And then also, I would put a recommendation in there, is the DDA chair has asked for the city council to participate in working out these issues that were tabled in January. I'd be happy to be a liaison on those specifically, on behalf of council, if you chose, if you chose to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yeah, Mr. Christie, you have something else you want to say?
I'm sorry, I'm back up again. This time representing the Green Cruise, based on the nonprofit discussion I had earlier. I'm just, I guess, suggesting or asking that consideration be put in place for nonprofit events and/or groups, because if I look at the funding here, and we think about the Green Cruise with a parade and a bike and a walk on Nine Mile, closing off parking lots, collecting fees for the parking, the police cost, DPW cost, the fees, the security deposit, what hazard level we might be at, you know, going into an hour, sixth year or fifth year in Ferndale, that's tough, and I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christie. All right, we have a motion on the table that at this point is just to adopt sections 7 through 21, less 13 and 18. Any further discussion on those items?
My question about not adopting 13 and 18 are whether or not that will affect any of the language, sort of then, within the ordinance. For example, after 13, the note says, well, it says, "Request city approval, city review of all," start over, "request for city review of all promotional materials to assure accuracy and." and compliance with the new requirements," and this is specifically what I'm asking about, "to thank the city of Ferndale and/or the inclusion of the downtown Ferndale logo if the event is occurring downtown." Would we then be striking that requirement to thank the city and include the logo? I don't know how event organizers feel about having our logo all over their stuff if we're not, if we're not sponsoring anyway.
We can ask Councilman Galloway what his thought was on the exclusion, but if we're not sponsoring these events...
Why are our logos on?
How do we make them put our... So what was your intent?
Oh man, I think it goes to Mr. Johnston's point to some degree, that, and really, I think Christina's conversation, you know, who's going to be in the event business, and the people who are putting on the event should get the credit for it, and the people, you know, I guess I hadn't thought about it too much. My concern really was the, the idea that the city of Ferndale is going to be approving artwork for ad copy? I mean, that just seems...
Pride festivals.
Yeah, I mean, what, you know, I don't want to get involved in any sort of review of, you know, the pride logo as to this or to that, it just, I don't want to be involved in it.
So the intent of his motion is to discard all of that related, and I'm sure Sherilyn got that.
And that's fine with me, I just wanted to clarify, because I've spoken to someone specifically about that earlier.
They thank you somewhere for somebody...
If we give them something, they can thank us, but at this time, we're just accepting their money.
I don't like making people thank you.
Yeah.
Either they thank you or they don't.
I don't think we should be paid on things.
Too much government.
All right. I think we might have consensus. Any other discussion so far? Madam Clerk, let's try on that motion.
Okay. Councilmembers Baker? Yes. Galloway?
Yes.
Gumbelton?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
And Mayor Covey?
Yes, so we've adopted that section. Now, we still have Section 1 through, well, we still have more items here, and it could be that someone might make a motion to table. We could discuss more things, you could make a motion to accept it or some of it.
A question to the Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we need to then specifically strike 13 and 18, or was that implied?
We didn't adopt it, therefore it's still, it's not a part of the motion, and it's just out there.
Hanging out there? Okay. Then I guess to finish up that piece of business, I would move that item number 13 and item number 18 be removed?
You don't have, you don't have...
I don't need to?
No, ma'am.
Oh, then I misunderstood what you told me.
I'm sorry.
That's okay?
By not adopting them, they're not part of anything, and unless we move to adopt them, they go away. They go into wherever bureaucracy goes.
Jeez, don't ask that question.
But what do you guys, what do y'all want to do with 1 through 6? Do you want to table and bring back with comments to the next meeting, first meeting in January? Do you want to discuss some more now?
Well, I guess number 5 at least doesn't require any action, that's already been adopted. If we want to look at that, those fees again, we'd have to have a motion to review the decision we already made, which perhaps is appropriate, but...
I think that we should, I'd like to make a motion...
Yes, ma'am.
That we table items 1 through 6 to the first scheduled meeting in January and review all event fees at that time.
Support. Thank you, Councilwoman Gumbelton and Councilman Galloway for the second. The motion is, if I hear correctly, 1 through 6 come back to the very next meeting, which is, I believe, is January 14th?
11th, I believe.
January 11th, the second Monday of January, and we will review these and any other fees we wish to.
And I can make a comment now?
Of course you can.
Okay. I'm not going to be here in January, so my opinion for what you take it for is, we're looking at a relatively small amount of money, 1,800 to 2,200 for these larger events. So I would just ask Council to really consider, these events, I think, are really important and due to the economic times, and our budget, $2,200 is not very much. So I would just support really looking at the issue and supporting these events, so...
Thank you, Councilwoman, and we do, of course, we very much value your opinion, even after you're not on a council, we still value your opinion.
You can come back and talk to us whenever you want.
I'm going to come back every meeting.
Yeah, right. I believe that.
And to the Chair, just one comment on that fee schedule. I'm looking at page 5, I believe it is, where the sample special event fee schedule matrix is set up, and as I looked through this, I was reminded of a similar fee schedule that we had at my former place of employment for anyone who wanted to rent our facility. There were certain minimums that you needed to hit in certain areas, and then certain fees that you would be assessed based on the types of services that you used. So it's not uncommon that these types of fees are charged. I guess I would just want us to, in the next two weeks, think about the type of community that we value, the types of events that we value, and if they are large, sort of, you know, essentially, I wouldn't call the Dream Cruise corporate run because it is a nonprofit, but if it's that type of large event that could potentially absorb, you know, 2500 bucks plus police, plus DPW, you know, plus, 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 that's one thing. If we do volunteer our community-based, volunteer-driven events, then perhaps we need to either reexamine the fee schedule, which Councilman Galloway just talked about, or take a look at some of these one-time-use fees. That being said, I know that we've now encouraged all of our departments to try and recoup some of their costs, so we are in a bit of a conundrum here, and the process is fantastic, Sherilyn. I'm so excited that we formalized something that's been pretty ad hoc and difficult for your team as well as difficult for the organizers for years. So I guess that's what I hope we talk about in two weeks, is how our city's value system impacts, you know, some of these, it could easily be 2,500, so I imagine 8,000 or 10,000 if you've got a lot of police out there, you know, for example, so...
Appreciate that, Councilwoman Baker. I tend to agree. I think, I think it's fine to charge fees. I always believe in balance, and that is that, yes, you could start with fees, but you gradually bring them up. You don't start from a little bit of fees and then bang, have an organization come in and find $1,000 worth of new costs. Pontiac did lose Arts Beats and Eats, I think from the survey the citizens filled out last fall. If I'm not mistaken, firefighters were right up at the very top as the most satisfaction, along with the police, but the city events were also on the top of that grid as one of the most popular things in our city, that people love the DIY or the Pride Fest or the pub crawl or the Dream Cruise or whatever it is, so. Any other discussion on the motion to table? And those of us who wish to can give our input to any of the staff on where we'd like to see these go, and I don't suspect it'll be a huge, long meeting when it comes back because we'll have time to think about it and study it. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Galloway?
Yes.
Gumbelton?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Covey?
Yes, as well. Passes, thank you very much. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Council liaison reports, if any.
Liaison reports. Anyone, Mr. Bruner, you first?
I don't have anything tonight, Your Honor.
Anything from the Michigan Suburbs Alliance? Ms. Piana?
Hi, real briefly, I just want to let you know that the Michigan Suburbs Alliance just was part of a huge grant application to the U.S. Department of Energy on behalf of the State of Michigan, which was a partner in this grant. We're going after $75 million for energy efficiency retrofit upgrades in 39 neighborhoods in the state of Michigan. The U.S. Department of Energy is offering $400 million, and we're hoping to be one of the eight winners nationally. We are partnering with the Department Labor of Economic Growth, for the first time ever, with the City of Detroit, with the Detroit Economic Growth Corporation, the City of Grand Rapids, and the Southeast Michigan Energy Office, which is a program through the Michigan Suburbs Alliance, as well as warm training, which provides energy efficiency training to local governments. So cross your fingers that this money comes back to Michigan and that comes back to Ferndale and the other entering suburbs here, so we should be, we should be notified in the spring. So hopefully we'll have someone from the Suburbs Alliance, or I can on council tell you that we got the money.
That'd be great. Thank you, Councilwoman-elect. Any other items on the liaison reports, Mr. Bruner?
No, nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Nothing tonight. Next item, Madam Clerk?
We have called to council, Your Honor.
Called to council, Police Chief Mike Kitchen. Do you have any news for us?
Maybe a little bit.
See sirens go by?
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, from the Police Department, Happy New Year to everybody. Hope it's safe and prosperous. I hope it's better than this year, especially December, which has been a disaster from our perspective. Just so you know, we have made an arrest on the VFW murder case, and, but we're still working on it, and I've got to thank a lot of people for their efforts so far, especially the Detroit Police Department, I'll tell you. Chief Evans and Deputy Chief Meyer have really stepped up. We're at an unprecedented level of cooperation with the DPD. They provided everything we've asked for, their gang squads, special response unit, even marked units, and that is as promised when we started meeting with the new group down there, and we really appreciate it, as well as the help of the Oakland County Sheriff's Office. The members of the Royal Oak Township substation have been instrumental in providing a lot of information. The Oakland County Prosecutor's Office has been working with us hand-in-hand in terms of monitoring our investigation to a successful prosecution. The DEA is helping, our NET teams and CES undercover officers, and our South Oakland County SWAT team, which of course made the arrest this morning. And not, not the least of which is our own investigators who continue to work around the clock. This is, this arrest is significant, but it's not anywhere near the end. We're asking people to call with information, of course, the Ferndale Police Department, 248-541-3650, or Crime Stoppers at 1-800-SPEAKUP. There's still award money out, or reward money out there, and we think it'll have an effect on the settlement of this case. Regarding the information on this case, we have, the Police Department has fired up Nixle. I would encourage, we were waiting to go completely public with this, to go, to do it simultaneously with the, with the school system, but for some reason, we're not quite there yet, but I'm going, we're live on Nixle, so I would encourage everyone to go to nixle.com and sign up for the service, it's free. What it does is, it's a free service that alerts you, when we put stuff out, as simple as we're looking for someone in your backyard on Allen Street, for instance, it will light up either your smartphone or your computer, whatever you sign up for, and it'll give you that information. And we are updating this case on Nixle as well as a lot of stuff. So we're looking forward to partnering up with the school system when they get ready to go. Of course, they're off right now, but, but we think it's important enough that everyone take a look at it, and it's, it's a kind of a cool service, it's free to us and it's free to the users. Yeah, finally, thanks to Tamiko for your four years of work and support, and good luck, and really, we thank you for what you've done, and have a Happy New Year.
Thanks. Hey, Chief, can you, can you spell the email address out for Nixle?
N-I-X-L-E dot com. Nixle.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief, congratulations. Well, job well done. Fire Chief Roger Schmidt?
Thank you, Your Honor. Like to wish everyone a Happy New Year, a happy and safe New Year, and I would also like to thank Councilwoman Gumbelton for her four years of service. She was my liaison person to the council, and we got along splendidly, I think, and it was a pleasure working with her. We know you'll still be a presence in town. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Roger.
Byron, anything from the Department of Public Works, sir?
No, we aren't just helping with the year's eve, I hope it doesn't snow anymore.
Okay. Thank you kindly. Councilwoman-elect Piana, anything else you'd like to share?
Yes. I also want to say, thank you, Tamiko, for your four years of service. I have some big shoes to fill, and I look forward to calling on you in the next four years, getting your advice. I also want to say, I'm sorry, Chris, for giving you the wrong information earlier.[1482.65][1482.65](laughter)
Thanks, Melanie. We'll see you up here in two weeks. Madam Clerk?
Nothing further this evening, Your Honor.
Mr. Bruner?
Thanks, Your Honor. Earlier this year, our Cable Department and the City Clerk's Office started working together on a project to bring these televised council meetings to the Internet, and Madam Clerk is now in there wrestling with the technology as we speak.
No, it's just that, that reminded me of what I forgot I was going to say, but you're handling it so well.[1517.83][1517.83](laughter)
So I want to thank this, take this opportunity to recognize and thank Del Schmidt, our city's Cable Director, for working with City Clerk and Deputy City Clerk in bringing this, this project together. If you haven't seen it yet, you can go to the city's website, you can now watch the meetings online as they happen or after they happen, and the video is integrated along with the meeting agenda as well as the meeting minutes. So we were looking for a way to get more city records online, and this opportunity to integrate agendas and minutes with the video is a really fantastic-looking product, and you go online and you see it, and it looks so simple, but it was not simple to get it up and running, and lots of time and energy from, from our Cable Department and our City Clerk's Office, so I thank you all for, for making that happen. Also wanted to thank Councilmember Gumbelton for her service to the city, thank you for her good judgment in being one of the folks who voted to hire me some two and a half years ago. I hope never to make you regret that decision, but as an appointed official who works with elected officials, I'm always in somewhat awe of the folks who would take on this responsibility for very little pay compared to the, to the amount of work that you, that you all have to, to put into it, but I'm grateful that there are folks like you out there that will do the job, because this former government wouldn't work without elected officials who are willing to give generously of their time to their community, so thank you for your service to the community.
Well put. Dan, Chris, City Attorney?
I'd just like to echo that, Tamiko. It's been a pleasure to work with you. I wish you the best luck, best wishes for the future, and for everybody else, I'd like to wish you a happy and safe New Year.
Thank you, Dan, Chris. Councilwoman Baker?
I can't say goodbye to Tamiko because just listening to everyone say goodbye to Tamiko makes me upset, so we'll, we'll talk offline perhaps at an upcoming Ferndale Council meeting, because you're not getting away from everything quite so easily. We announced, I believe, at our last council meeting, that the Fern Care Free Clinic was awarded, after much work by many of the board members and our board president, as well as our advocates in the federal government, $150,000 appropriation for construction of the clinic. It is moving forward now at an extremely rapid pace. We are getting updates all the time, and board members are now making some pretty significant decisions about construction management, leases, and when construction will start. So a lot of excitement among the board, and we are now working to get some firmer timelines out to the community about when we will open and what services we will, we will offer. So stay tuned as more information becomes available on that. We have wonderful volunteers, and we hope be able to open our doors, providing a variety of services in addition to physical health care, including mental health care and perhaps even dental referrals. So I will keep everyone updated, I'm sure Ann Heller will be here to update people as well. Oh, I had another one, and it's, it's left my brain. Perhaps it will come back, but I will...
You remember it?
I'll pass, I'll pass.
Councilman Lennon?
I'd just like to reiterate what I said earlier, Tamiko, thank you for your service to the community, and I wish you well in future endeavors, okay? I'd like to wish everybody a happy and safe and hopefully a prosperous New Year. Chief Kitchen, good job by the men and women of the Police Department, I knew it was just a matter of time. Chief Schmidt, I'd like to commend the Fire Department for the rescue of that woman from the burning building in Hazel Park last week. Another piece of fine work by the Ferndale Fire Department. Thank you.
That's it. Mayor Pro Tem Galloway?
Not too much to add, going to miss having you up here, Tamiko, and Happy New Year.
Councilwoman Gumbelton?
Yeah, I will take a, take a moment. One, I'd love to thank the citizens of Ferndale for electing me to office, and the honor to serve the citizens I have taken quite seriously, and I feel really honored to have...
And I feel really honored to have been part of the last four years of taking care of the city, giving the citizens a voice and really connecting with people in the city, businesses, events on a different level. And I would like to thank the staff. The staff, over my four years, we've built good relationships, strong relationships, started to set some goals as a team here, but the professionalism of our city staff is something I think all residents and citizens should be proud of. You know, I started off and didn't, you know, you start off learning bits and pieces about what each department does and what they need to do to get their job done. And I really feel that the staff members and the appointees especially have been very helpful in my education as a council member and the ability to make good decisions for our city. So, I would like to thank you all, have a Happy New Year and congratulate Melanie. She will do a great job for our city. She's already started educating herself and being involved in meetings and her dedication will really show once she gets up here and I'll, I'll be glad to welcome her in in January. So, thank you and Happy New Year.
Thanks, Tamiko.
I'd like to end by just saying, first of all, that the ICE Festival, I thought was a delightful event. I thought the ICE sculptures were gorgeous, especially setting on the drums that they were setting on. I want to thank Dean Bach for putting on the ICE Jungle behind Dino's. That was very cool. And all in all, I think that whole weekend that the DDA put on was a very important and effective weekend with the Warm Hearted Cookie Challenge and the ICE sculptures. It brought thousands of people to downtown and I think that's what the DDA does well. So, even though everything always gets some criticism, you can always, you know, find the dark lining in a silver cloud, I suppose, but I thought it was a great event. The Blues Festival's coming up very soon, January 29th through February 6th. And I've noticed more people this year have put blue lights out anyway for the holidays. Leave those on, leave those out for, for the Blues Festival as it gets closer. Again, thank you, Councilwoman Gumbelton, for your four years of service. Congratulations, Chief. I know that people can rest easier now knowing that that case is partly being solved with the teenagers. And finally, everyone, please be safe. 2009 for some of us was a tough year. I, for one, will be glad to see it go. And may 2010 be a great and better year for all of us here in Michigan. No other business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.